...before the meeting even starts. I don't even know how many, you know, that we reconciled before we even got started. Call this meeting to order. Vice Mayor, Council, members of the staff, members of public, thank you so much for being here. Russell, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember McKay?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's great to be back and to all those, all the well wishers, thank you very much. Your prayers and your thoughts were certainly very helpful and it's great to be back up here, a part of this process in this wonderful town that we all love and adore. So it's great to be back. Before we get started, I know that in consultation with Andy, and I suspect that Council doesn't have a problem, that there were some issues that came up with regards to item number 11. So Andy withdrew that item for this evening, but it will be back on the March 12th agenda. Again, it's an item that was withdrawn by administration. So we can cross 11 off?
You need a motion?
No, we don't need a motion. He just withdrew it. I'm probably going to need a motion here in a minute because we might change the order of business, but let's see how that progresses. Thanks, Freddie. Richard Stark is not here. He did tell us he's going to come, be arriving a little bit late. It's always a pleasure to hear from our representative, who does such a great job on our behalf, and I'm sure he's got some interesting things to tell us, that's for sure. Item number four, it's a pleasure to introduce these wonderful young ladies, both Lydia Rodriguez and Gina Larson, with the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society and upcoming Light the Night Walk that's coming up here in the very near future. And I want to invite you to come up and tell us about that and let us know how we can help. And thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Lydia Rodriguez. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Good evening, my name is Lydia Rodriguez. I work for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, so thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak about such an amazing organization.
You can take that mic out if you'd like to hold it. You can pull it out of there, yeah.
Stay with me. So just a little bit about the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. We exist to find cures and ensure access treatment for blood cancer patients. We have one goal, our quote is "a world without blood cancer." In our 60-year history, LLS has invested nearly $1 billion to accelerate cancer treatments once thought impossible. LLS is leading the way by identifying promising research that could deliver better cancer treatments and to provide support that accelerates the time it takes to get these treatments on the market. So LLS is dedicating to Make Some Day today. In addition to funding breakthrough research, your support allows LLS to provide free information and support to patients and their families. In fact, in 2014, LLS has donated more than $35 million that was provided for co-pays since to help pay, help with patients, and our local chapter alone has donated $900,000. Your support to LLS has allowed us to be the voice for all blood cancer patients and drive legislation that accelerates the development and improves new treatments and ensures access to quality care. Right now, we are, there are a lot of people still fighting cancer, and our focus is to provide them support and most importantly, give them hope, give the hope that we're going to find a cure and we are going to have a world without cancer. So tonight, I've brought a special guest with me, she who has overcome so much, and I know you guys will be even more inspired by her story. Her name is Gina Larson.
Good evening, my name is Gina Larson. I'm a cancer survivor. I'm really excited to be here tonight to talk about my journey and to talk about an organization near and dear to my heart, the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. In 2012, I was diagnosed with stage three Hodgkin's lymphoma. It was news to me, I felt great. I immediately started treatment for a year, and in 2013, I was deemed cancer-free. Actually, two weeks ago, I had my year and a half review, and I am still in remission.
Yeah.
Thank you. My story is a little interesting. My mom had a completely different cancer than I had, but I watched her battle cancer for over two years, and she passed away in April 2012, and I got diagnosed in August 2012, so four months later. So that was really tough for me. I decided, you know what, I'm going to have a really positive attitude. She would want me to be healthy and happy, have a great dad, so I decided to just be cancer, well with chemotherapy and treatment, but with a positive attitude. I also turned to golf. I'm a competitive golfer, and I played a lot of golf when I was sick, and I actually just won a match today, seven and five, so that was pretty exciting.
Tomorrow's the finals, so send some positive vibes my way.
But I'm just really so thankful for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. When I got sick, I was extremely confused. I didn't even know what blood cancer was. I actually didn't even really know it was possible, but the organization has been there for me financially, mentally. I've made a lot of friends and connections through the organization. Their walk is amazing, the Light the Night Walk is a great event in Fort Lauderdale, it was last November, so we have a year to prepare to make it a great year for that. But I'm really grateful for health and for this wonderful organization that you just learned about. So I hope you guys can learn some more about the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society and join us to put cancer behind everyone. Thank you.
So just on a quick note, if any of you are interested in getting involved in the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, we have different ways to get involved. The one I focus on is Light the Night Walk. It's pretty much, it's in a celebration to give thanks back to the cancer patients and the people that remember, that have lost their lives to cancer. It's a leisurely mile walk, but what we do is we have these beautiful lanterns that we join together, carry the lit-up lanterns at night, and walk about a mile. And then at the end of the mile, we have a firework display. It's a family fun event, so we want everyone to come. It's at Hyzina Plaza. This year, it's going to be on November 14th on a Saturday, and it's from 4:00 to 7:00. And so if you guys have any questions, please feel free to come up to me, and also you can go to lls.org and find out some more information and other ways to get involved. So thank you so much for having me.
Lydia, it's a pleasure. Thank you so much for taking the time and for all the wonderful things that you do on behalf of this organization and the people that benefit us, or benefit. And Gina, God bless. Kick lymphoma in the butt. God bless you and your recovery, and we wish you nothing but the very, very best. And good luck with your golf game as well. Congratulations on your victory today. And thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. Okay. All right, we're going to go back to item three. I saw Representative Stark just come in the door, and I know that you've been busy out there and about. And come on up, Representative Stark. Again, a very good friend of the town of Southwest Ranches, is always there to help us in time of need and tell us all the wonderful things that are happening in Tallahassee and all the great projects that we're going to benefit from.
Well, thank you very much. By the way, you know, I hate, I mean, I love looking at you guys, but my apologies-
Listen, feel free to take the mic out, Richard. Take the mic out and turn around and face the audience. Help yourself.
Well, first of all, I just want to say hi to everybody. It is really a, you know, I mean, I hear people say this, but really it's an honor and privilege to be able to represent the town of Southwest Ranches. Next week, we're going to start the legislative session on Tuesday, and so I'm, you know, driving up. I'm driving up this time, not flying. And we have a very busy week. We have the opening session on Tuesday, and we had three committee meetings, excuse me, three committee weeks in the month of February. So you would think that really, basically, it's almost like we've already been in session. But I'm going to turn around, I want to address really the town council, because we have a couple of important things going on, and I just want everybody to be aware of some of the bills that are going to be coming up. This year, I'm going to be on five committees, and I'm going to be on one committee that I was on last year, which is the Finance and Tax Committee. And based on what you hear, Finance and Tax, we will be hearing things about either adding or taking away different types of taxes, finding ways to cut taxes, give money backs to the tax holders, but there are a few bills that, you know, I'm going to give a buyer beware, I want to talk to you about. But committees I'm going to be serving on this year, Finance and Tax, Health and Innovation, which is, deals with the health insurance and the Affordable Care Act. I'm on something called Choice and Innovation, so I've got two committees with the term innovation, but this deals with schools. So for example, we're going to be dealing with charter schools, voucher programs, virtual schools, things like this. I'm also on something called the Highway and Waterway Safety Committee, and my last committee that I'm on is Transportation and Economic Development. Now, at this juncture, we have also already taken a look at what's going to go on committees, what we think is going to be proposed this year. So I'm just going to tell you about some of the bills that I'm working on, but then I want to talk about a few things that are going on in the legislature that I'm very concerned about that affects cities and municipalities. First of all, I have this year what's called House Bill Number One. Now, it's an honor to be able to get a bill out and for it to be Bill Number One. State of Florida, two years ago, passed a law that said it was against the law to text while you drive. Now, it's very difficult to enforce. It's difficult to enforce in almost all states, but 39 states have texting while driving as a primary offense, which means your law enforcement can pull somebody over if they see somebody texting. Florida, it's a secondary offense. We had 23 years of the seatbelt law being a secondary offense, so I'm just telling you, it's an uphill battle to get it changed, but almost unanimously, when I speak to law enforcement, they want to be able to enforce the law. And right now, it's very difficult to enforce. Not that it's going to be easy, that people have tinted windows today, people have cars that are high up. Oh, I didn't realize I wasn't on. Very well, okay. But it's not necessarily easy for officers to be able to do this, but there's so much distracted driving going on, that it's almost unanimous when I speak to law enforcement that they would like this bill passed. I have another issue. I didn't think that I was going to get a bill like this this year, but we had a child last year in Dade County that was electrocuted in his own pool, and we're going to be addressing pool safety, probably in the form of the voltage of lights in the pool, because this has a lot to do with it, but that bill is still a work in progress. However, it has been filed. I've got a Senate sponsor for it, and we do have some, you know, in order to get a bill passed, you really have to get bipartisan support. So the texting support, we do have a lot of support among the Republican delegation, but it's going to be getting it passed some of the leadership who really doesn't want it. So this is what we're going to be working very tightly on. In the Finance and Tax Committee, we're going to be overseeing a few different things, one of which is very important, is a communication services tax. And my understanding is that cities, municipalities, towns, that very often taxes from communications can be upwards of 10% of revenue for a lot of the municipalities and towns. And we are trying to have that bill where we're going to lower the taxes from the state's side. In other words, the taxes that the state collects, we're looking to lower that and leave the cities alone. However, we are very concerned with the chairman of the committee, who we think is going to take away the power of the cities to tax. So we're going to be watching that very closely, and I'm asking you to be very vigilant in working with the, you know, cities and municipalities, the League of Cities and the League of Municipalities. And so I'm asking you to be vigilant and to do that. The other thing that I was not happy about, there's a term called PCB. PCB stands for Proposed Committee Bill. And this means that the committee puts out the bill, and it doesn't have an individual sponsor. And one of the first bills that I saw in the Finance and Tax Committee is looking to go beyond what we think is the scope of the law now, when cities and municipalities have an issue, where there's been an audit, where there's found some things that are not correct and have to be corrected, and the chairman of the same committee is not a fan of the, of home rule of, you know, of our municipalities, and is looking to have a few issues where, for, I'm just going to give you an example, if there's an audit within a city, and the city is at fault and has to make a corrective action, he wants to punish the city and town councils by suspending salaries and suspending pay. And I was in a committee last year, and he told me at that committee that, you know, he thought that the state should have a lot more power than it does now over cities, towns, and municipalities. So I'm asking you, begging you, to make sure you were in this legislative process this year, because many of us in Broward are not happy with the communication services taxes. Broward County alone could lose over $30 million. So we're going to be working very hard this season to make sure that, you know, our, the people that we represent, you know, get their, you know, that get, are treated fairly. And, you know, there are other things I can talk about. We're going to be speaking this year about water. We passed Amendment Number One. We're going to be discussing whether the cities, whether this, excuse me, the state is going to pay a shell game and take the money that should be going to Amendment One and put it towards other things. So we've got a lot of work cut out ahead. Most of the items that we work on in Tallahassee are bipartisan, and a lot of the things that I'm talking about here, these are bipartisan as far as support for, you know, for cities, towns, and municipalities. I know I've said that over and over again, but this is something I am very concerned about. So I'm just going to tell you about one or two of my fund bills, and I'm just going to tell you something interesting. In this day, in the modern age, we have a statute in the state of Florida that says if you are a man and a woman, and you are not married, it is against the law to live together. Now, this is, dates back to 1869. It was decriminalized in 1970, so the worst penalty you can have is $500 and be put in jail for two months. And one of my concerns is, I represent Century Village, and I know a lot of the people in Century Village, they live together, they're not married. I mean, in this day and age, you lose your social security if you're a widow and widower and now want to, you know, move in together and get married. So there's, you know, so it's not like it was 100 years ago, or 130 years ago. So I'm trying to get this law changed. I had it last year, somebody had it three years ago. Last year, I got it through two committees, and the committee chair that I had, it was the final stop, told me that he still thinks that this law should be on the books, and that it's telling the citizens of Florida the wrong thing if we were to repeal this law, because we're giving up on family values. So I'm just telling you that this is, this is where it is, but it's almost an embarrassment to still have this law on the books, and we're going to be working to get this off. Now, it's not one of my absolute real priorities, but we do have a lot of statutes that date way back when that really should be changed, and this is one of them. So you may want to go, and we do have a website for the Florida House of Representatives. You can Google that, you can take a look at every single representative on there, you can take a look at our bills in the actual form that they're written, which most of the time, I can't even understand. But there is a summary, plus my door is open all the time. I don't care how busy I am up there. You know, people said to me, "Well, are you going to run for your seat again?" It's not my seat, it's your seat. Seat belongs to, seat belongs to the citizens of the state of Florida. I'm just happy that I was elected and re-elected to be able to serve you. So I'm going to end there. You've got an important meeting tonight, but I'm always happy to be here. My door is always open, especially to the wonderful town council members, and I don't know if you're going up this year to see me, but, you know, if I have, good. And I got to tell you, last week, I had people come to see me, I had no daylight on the calendar. So you let me know that you're up there, and I'll make sure that we shuffle it around and get you in. All right, thank you, folks. Have a great meeting tonight. Looking forward to working with you.
Rick, always a pleasure to see you. Again, thanks for everything you do on our behalf, and thank you for taking the time to come here and update us on a lot of interesting things that are happening, and some bills that could have some serious implications with regards to not only our municipalities, but municipalities throughout the state of Florida. So thank you for that. Thanks for the heads up.
One last thing I want to tell you, is I had the City of Weston analyze this bill yesterday, and I'm going to forward it to you with the notes of Dave Keller, who's the Assistant City Manager.
Great, great. Anything we can do. Thank you, Rick. Okay, that concludes through items one through four. Item number five, public comment.
Mayor, we have seven speakers.
Oh, wait, wait, oh, before we get going. I know that people looking up, and they're looking at you, Richard, and say, Keith Poliakoff. Keith Poliakoff. But anyway, it's my pleasure to introduce Richard DeWitt, who I think that just recently we're hired as part of the law firm, and welcome. I promise you, we're going to do the best we possibly can, that you don't have to provide input or give us any opinions. We're hopeful that you'll have to do nothing but sit there and just give us the thumbs up, that we're doing everything right. But Richard, welcome. It's a pleasure to have you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We have seven speakers tonight. The first speaker up is Vince Valletta.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and the general public. I wanted to thank Representative Stark for his update on the Tallahassee, and also I wanted to thank Councilman Gary, excuse me.
My last name is Jablonsky.
For updating us on, last night on Sterling Road improvements. I kept to thank the administrator. Oh, my name is Vince Valletta, Sunshine Ranches, Southwest Ranches. I forgot to introduce myself.
We know you well, Vince, thank you. For the record.
Yeah, that's for the record, right. I wanted to thank the administrator, that if you take a look, that we have some historical material in the historical cabinets that just came out. True, it's recent history, and we're still waiting for the ancient history, and I hope that it'll be coming forth soon. And I wanted to thank the people that are going to be there Saturday for the Chili Cook-Off. And that's all I have to say at this time. Thank you for your consideration and your time for listening.
The next speaker is Tracy Sway. Next speaker is Norm Hollingsworth.
No. 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 No.
It's Noel Hollingsworth, by the way. Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue.
We can't hear you, Noel.
Yeah, okay. Got one thing to talk about tonight, and I was giving a document by Emily this last week, it's South Florida Water Management District to Hold Proposed Surplus Lands Public Meeting. And if, the outline, and I'll just give this to you afterwards so you can pass it around, happens to be the exact outline of the area that we are looking to make a employment center out on US 27 to surplus that. Well, there's one little piece right here, which is just north of Griffin Road and bounded by US 27 and the C-11, and I was curious, could we get that as an entranceway park, since the state is declaring it surplus land? And I know there's a procedure for surplus lands to go to municipalities. So I was curious if the town council would be interested in looking at that as an entranceway park, which would be, by the way, buttress right up to the property that we already own, that we're going to put the fire station on. So that entire triangle there would then become Southwest Ranches property, so if you would consider taking a look at that as an entranceway park, if the county, if the South Florida Water Management is declaring a surplus, and if we can get it without any dollar amount, or $1 maybe, I can go to that. You'll go for a buck? Okay. So, take a look, and hopefully something can come of it.
Thank you, Noel. And I see Andy over there taking notes. We appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Very interesting thought, that's for sure.
Yep.
Thank you, Noel.
All right, the next speaker up is Barry Nunzig.
Good evening, Barry Nunzig, 16300 Sterling Road. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit about the fire department, volunteer fire department. There's been some meetings. I hope some of the commissioners bring up some of the things that have been talked about in those meetings. Some discussion was had on property that's located approximately 190th Avenue and Griffin Road, to move Davy from where they are to that position. That would give the town a more balanced response out west, and make it so that ALS service was more readily available. I know you guys have this plan to put the volunteers out of 212. You have to remember, the volunteers are BLS service only. So if someone's in need of ALS service, moving the volunteers out there is going to do very little, if anything at all. If the person is in need of IVs and drugs, moving the volunteers out there is going to do nothing for them, because the volunteers don't carry drugs or IVs, and therefore they cannot administer them. So regardless of where you put the volunteers, until Davy gets there, you're not going to have that service. Taking that money that you're going to spend out of 212, to me, is a waste of money. We'd be much better off for everybody in the city if you were to just identify land somewhere around the 190th Avenue mark, and start your plans to building a permanent station there, brick and mortar, where you could put Davy out there, and it would serve the purpose that we need to be served out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Our next speaker is John Eastman.
Good evening, Council. John Eastman, 188th Avenue. Ongoing FPL information. I guess the town is dealing with the swale issue. We still have the pole removals, and now a newer item has come up that's been kind of put to the front burner, and it is, most of the homes, if not all of them, on 188th Avenue have had repetitive failures of the service coming off the transformer underground to the house. People lose their legs, you might lose one or both, but by far, the worst one to lose is your neutral, because once you lose the neutral, a couple of things can happen. Your body can become the neutral when you touch something, like your shower head. Another thing that can happen, which happened in one home, is all the circuits were energized with 220 because there was no neutral, and somehow it backfed. And one home had all the appliances, everything, anything plugged in, catch on fire at the same time. That was shortly after a pole had been changed out, and they didn't properly ground the neutral on the replacement pole. That same thing happened at my house, not as severely. We were getting shocks in the bath. They came out and they found that the neutral had not been connected properly up on the replaced pole. That was since December. I haven't had much luck lately in inducing FPL to come out and do anything about these things. I keep getting promises, but they don't call me back, they're difficult to reach, they ignore my emails. So, you know, at this point, I'm kind of pushing it on the town to take care of it. The items that I mentioned, the poles, that's just aesthetics, really, but this wiring that was put in when the houses were built had a 20-year expected lifespan, and it's been underwater most of its life. It's just, you know, inexpensive aluminum wire. It doesn't do well when it's submerged. You get the slightest crack in the casing, and you get electrolysis that eats through these wires. And most of the homeowners have had this issue two, sometimes three times. You know, the wire just keeps getting cut and repaired, and they changed, you know, a dozen poles on the street, and every, every single home that had a pole changed, they segmented those wires, you know, because the pole's not in the same spot, they have to add a piece. So that's six connections that can fail, and they have been failing. So that's six connections that can fail, and they have been failing, because A, they weren't done correctly, or they're loose, or any number of reasons. But aluminum's a pretty poor choice for wiring, nobody uses it in homes anymore. FPL does it to save money on our service drops. What I would like to see done is, building and zoning, fire, whoever you can get in, come out and basically red-tag these services, and have FPL come out and change the service on every single home on the block, because the wire is 15 to 20 years beyond its useful life. And the newer wiring, even the inexpensive aluminum, has a much superior insulation on it that's more suitable for direct bury. But, you know, we've had a couple electrocutions, we've had one almost house fire, and we have continued failures. So, it's time we do something about it. These things are just gonna keep happening, and we'll see more frequency, and eventually, somebody's gonna get hurt really bad. My only other comment is fire. I agree with Barry. We need to look at a brick and mortar station somewhere around the middle, 190th Avenue. You know, buy the land if you have to. It's not that expensive when you're putting up a million-dollar station to spend another, you know, $100,000 on a couple acres. But I think that it would just be a total waste of money, and the development costs for that property out at the end there are very high, because it has to be platted, fill, I mean, the whole works has to be done there. If we're gonna spend that kind of money, let's do it on a real fire station that we can, we can build it big enough, let the volunteers work out of the back, you know, accommodate them with the construction, so they have a place to be, and Davy has a place to be, and we get the most bang for our buck. I really think, you know, the whole thing needs to be rethought. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And listen, with regards to your email, I want you to know that we have passed it along. I suspect Andy will have an update on his conversations, or his conversations and the status of things and how they're progressing, but I want you to know that we're working on it, and as part of administration comments, I suspect that he'll give you an update on the status of things.
Thank you.
No, thank you for bringing our attention, John.
As much as I can do, they're a monolithic organization.
I got you.
They don't listen to the small guy.
And again, thank you for forwarding that information to us, John.
Next speaker up is Timothy Sullivan.
My name is Tim Sullivan, I live about 205th Avenue.
Hi, Tim.
I just saw this year in the bulletin about downsizing the fire department down to two man, the volunteer part. I don't know what the conversation's been about, but you know, if you start downsizing them now, what are they gonna wind up with later? I mean, you got a good group of people that get together and do things. I did Davy's open house beginning of the month, with their fire medic and police. That weekend there alone, there was nobody to cover anything out here, because somebody, they were all tied up, they had an extra 15 minutes for another rig to get out here. I mean, you're talking about life and death situations. Don't downsize the volunteers that come out to every one of your events. And every parent enjoys that, because they know they're safe, they know they do it, they know they come out, they're interacting with their children, and they feel comfortable. And every one of you guys have gone up to them and gotten a hot dog or a hamburger or something from them. It's just a community thing. But as you start downsizing, you're gonna take them down to a little brush truck, which their hands are tied. You got a structure fire in someone's home, they're down to two man, one man stays by the truck, and the other one stands on the end of the hose waiting for somebody else to show up. Don't tie their hands. My house is out there, I know that part of town is usually like left on the last rung, but it's still important people out there, and everybody out there is a little concerned about it. I don't know if the volunteers get enough credit for what they do. I live out there, and I pass by them, and they pass by my house all the time, and they're usually the first ones out someplace, before anybody else shows up. Just don't take away something that's really good that they have started, that somebody else laid the groundwork, put together, made a blossom to a certain point, but to try to downsize them to holding their hands where they can't do anything, I don't think it's fair. It's not fair to the residents either. Because what's gonna happen is, once you eliminate them, then the Davy's gonna come in and say, "All right, well, now we need a whole new rig," and there's a $3 million bounty probably gonna be put on top of that. So if you could take a couple of bucks, put towards it, to keep it alive and keep it growing, because you're never gonna have a volunteer program where people from the residents show up with the fires, because it doesn't work that way. They couldn't afford to live out here and be a volunteer. So, try to keep the program alive. I think it's in your benefit in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think I can speak on behalf of this council, whether east, west, north, or south, every resident in the town of Southwest Ranch is important to us, and again, we appreciate your comments.
Next speaker is Tracy Sway.
I ran out behind your backs, I'm sorry. Okay, got the microphone. I ran out behind your backs. Two things at one time, I can't do it. I'm getting too old. Anyways, I'm up here because I've gotten wind through the town, and that's been on three discussions, which shouldn't even be on the discussion board, about disability, and as for the military, and as for the military, as a current...
Tracy, that's coming up, it's an agenda item for discussion. It's a discussion item, and even if it is a discussion item, normally, we don't...
You don't bring it up?
No, no, I will. Listen, we violate, and I'm sitting here with Rich, we violate Robert's rules all the time with regards to public input.
Well, we don't wanna, we can wait. You want me to wait?
Yeah.
I will be more than happy to wait and hold my breath.
We're gonna open it up to the public.
Because I'm tired, okay?
No, that's okay.
Not a problem, we'll wait, give someone else a chance to talk tonight, thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
Next up is Gay Chapels.
Gay Chapels, I live at 5901 Southwest 160th Avenue, directly across from Hawks Bluff Elementary School. I was here several months ago, and made you all aware, and I did my homework, and I called the school board, and I talked to the superintendent, and he told me he would address it, but he hadn't really heard about it. And what it is, is the PTA had raised $18,000 or more, and they went out and bought a, let's say it looks just like Walgreens sign that this town complained about, and it's going to have four lines of movement, you know, telling me what this elementary school is up to. I don't know what they could be up to in an elementary school, but I'm gonna get it. And where they're gonna put it, is right on the corner, in front of their sign, which is, it's a concrete sign that's lit up, and I'm not even sure it's on school property. And it's going to face me, and it's six feet high. Now, we have dark skies in this town. I was told, when I called Davy, and I talked to the town administrator, and I talked to Judy Paul, and there isn't much they can do. It seems the school board can do pretty much whatever they want, and so can the schools. What fascinates me is that in Weston, they're down here, and they're very conservative, and they're very, you know, it really kind of depends on, I guess, powers to be. And it's not in our town, I'm telling you that now, it faces me. But let me tell you how, what a kind of a good neighbor I am. They put signs on my side, where my easement is, 660 feet, that said, "No parking." And I called the county, and I said, "Hey, I didn't, I don't want that, they've been parking there since the school was built." There's nowhere for them to go, it's a traffic nightmare. So they parked 660 feet on what used to be my owned property, but now it's my easement that I maintain. They also parked 660 feet down my street, the other way, because I'm a corner. I pulled up all the signs, and I did it because I had permission to do it, because nobody responded to it. And I cleared that with the town hall before I did it, but they didn't have the financial ability to remove them, but I had a machine that could move them very well, so I pulled them up. My point is this, I'm now gonna request that the town have, all vehicles will be towed, park on that easement, and all vehicles will be towed on the 660 feet going both ways. I have no other, I have no other resource to fight them with. And if they do that, you talk about a traffic jam, it ought to be a nightmare on that intersection, because we don't have any lights, we have two stop signs, you know, four stop signs. We now have a bus that they put in, and the bus stops on going south, right in the middle of the road, because they put the bus stop right on the end of the corner, in front of the Sikh temple, county bus. And they put four stops, we have one across the street, we have the one there, and then we have, down at the other Hindu temple, there's another bus stop on both sides. And then they go all the way to Griffin. So, we're a nightmare on that corner, but I lived through it. Now it's gonna get worse. They have a sign in, on Sterling Road, about halfway from the four-way stop going east. It's been lit up, it's there, it's been there forever. They don't want to put it there. I don't even know if they're not gonna leave that there. They want to put it on the corner, at that four-way stop, this huge sign, like Walgreens, and tell the public what? And cars going through are not gonna be distracted by this huge sign standing there? We have accidents now because they run the stop. We have accidents now because they're distracted, or they think it's a through road. I can't wait till they put this huge Walgreens sign telling me about an elementary school activity that nobody can go to except the elementary school. Okay? It's not a football game, it's not, they're not telling me to come to an opera or a play. What are they gonna tell me about this elementary school that's so friggin' important, that they have to put a Walgreens sign up there? If this town can do anything as a town to let the school board know, I would wish you would do it, please. Because I'm probably the oldest person out here, both in age and time spent, and my life has really changed, in more ways than you can count, but this is crazy. And my next question is, why would the PTA raise $18,000 for a sign?
Thank you, Gay. And that concludes all the speakers.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Item number five is now complete. Item number six, board reports. Any board members here that like to... No signs in Hawk Bluff, though, okay.
No.
I'm missing one. I don't have enough time.
Really, just to let you all know that at the Equestrian Park, they're having the chili cook-off on Saturday, and if you want to bring your chili and enter, you still can enter, I believe. But also, to let everybody know, we can't put it on the ad, the, there's only so much they can transmit. There's gonna be a petting zoo and pony rides, and so I just want, you know, there'll be entertainment for everybody, so hopefully, everybody will turn out. Thank you.
Thank you, Gay. Any other board reports, committee members? Seeing none, item number six, board reports, is now complete. Item number seven, council member comments.
Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. And welcome back, Mayor, it's good to have you back.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, Steve, thank you.
Just a couple of things. First, I wanted to thank John for his efforts with FPNL. We are working, I know Andy's working on it, he's gonna make some comments on it, but specifically, the grounding issue is very serious, and we want to get that taken care of just as quickly as we can. So we'll do our best to get their attention, and to get that worked on, all three of them, but really, the grounding is the one that stands out to me. The other thing, the only other thing I wanted to touch on was the, just because we had several folks get up and talk about the volunteer fire department, I wanted to make a quick comment about that. It's critical that we get something done quickly. I don't disagree with the location situation out there, that it would be better if it was somewhere in the middle, although I do think that 190th is still too far east, it needs to be further west than that, and somewhere between 190th and 210 is really where it should be, because that's the area that's in the most need. Tim, I appreciate your comments, I do think that we need to continue to do everything we can to support that organization. It is critical for the folks out west, those that are west of about 190th, that they get some additional support out there. And so, the plan here is to use that property, the broad wing property that is out there at 210, 212, and set up the volunteers out there, so that they will be able to respond much quicker out there than anybody can respond right now. They will be able to do the BLS, and even though they may not, even though they cannot do, even though they have people that are certified to do ALS, they don't have the equipment, as Barry was saying, they don't have the equipment or supplies to do that, they have to wait for Davy to arrive, but still, they can do a lot of things to prepare, and so that when Davy arrives, they can get right to what needs to be done, as opposed to doing the preliminaries. So, I think it will still be a big, a big plus for those out there, but I appreciate your comments. I think it's critical to the folks that live out west of 190th, that that be a priority and stay a priority, so I appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Doc?
I'm good.
Thanks, Doc. Freddie?
I don't really have a lot other, I had, I had got an email from a gentleman, let's see where it is, I guess I'm pronouncing it right, Andy helped me, Sugeant. He's a 10th grader at American Hedges High School, and he says, "I am the founding chairman for the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy." Well, actually, what it is, I don't know how many people go up and down Massacre Boulevard, but on the right, there's a place, and they call it Happy Farm. What those people do there, I had an opportunity to spend quite a bit of time there over the weekend, they have horses there, that, and all kind of animals, and it's a place that people, some of them are mentally ill, some of them are different type of things, but it's kind of a soothing thing for those people. While I was out there this weekend, there was kids, they put them on a pony, and they walked this kid around, and this kid really enjoyed it, so they, it looks like they got something pretty good going there. What impressed me was, this boy that I said is, I imagine he's in his teens somewhere, but him to take time to do what he's doing, what they did, they bought a tent, so these horses that they ride would have a place to get out of the sun, and he's trying to raise a thousand dollars to pay for this tent, so, and they had a, had a pretty nice crowd out there, and I was by there again today, and there's always three or four cars there where people are stopping there, so I think we can, we need to have as much support as we can for them. Other than that, things have been pretty quiet. We, I know Kalid don't agree with me when I say quiet, the fishing hole park has been a lot of work lately for him. They got so many things going on, so many things to try to get corrected, some contracts that are finished that he's gotta finalize and other things, but I want to thank him for all the work he's put now. And one of these days, Steve, we're gonna get it open, I don't know when, but it's gonna get there, it's getting there, it looks, I know one thing, if we don't get something done soon, it's gonna sink, because we're putting so much fill on the top of it, that I don't know we're gonna do with all the fill. But anyway, Kalid's working at it, he's trying to, he's got a couple of contracts now that they got out, to get some prices on, and we'll be moving along on that. Other than that, that's about all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Freddie. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor, thanks everybody for coming. I got a really long list tonight, so please bear with me, I'm usually pretty short. First off, I want to wish December a speedy recovery, hop along over here, she came out real well out of her surgery, and the mayor did, of course, so he's gonna be swinging at a golf club soon. Just want to do a public service announcement, Rolling Oaks Association, Civic Association, has their annual Easter egg hunt at the Rolling Oaks Park on March 28th at 11:00 a.m. The actual hunt starts at 12:00, but brunch is served at 11:00. And this Saturday... And this Saturday is the Astronaut Parks Foundation Chili Cook-Off from 12:00 to 4:00 at the Equestrian Park. It's gonna be a lot of fun. And I urge everybody to come out there. And I'm gonna close with one thing. I just want everybody to know that somebody up here, this is their lucky day. And when I name him, he's gonna need to go out and buy a lottery ticket. I lost the chili recipe. I gotta start over. So the award-winning council chili recipe is no more, I gotta create a new one. So you got a shot.
Really? Is it cooking yet? Have you started your...
Yeah, yeah.
See, my ingredients are still at Publix, so, you know, you're still ahead of me, but...
But I just wanted to mention that it's a different chili. I had to start over from scratch. I couldn't find it. It's one of those things, you know?
I think it's in my back wallet, actually.
So you need to go, you need to go by Publix and get a lottery ticket. This is your lucky day. And that's it. I'll close with that.
Well, that's a tough one to follow, that's for sure. Thanks, Gary. And with regards to a couple of comments that I have, one, I'm gonna wait for Keith to get back. You all know the status of the charter school lawsuit and the most recent decision. I will tell you that I've spoken to quite a few people out west that do not want that charter school and are very, very concerned about what it's gonna mean out there with regards to traffic, along with some other significant issues. In fact, there's been several that, you tell me that that charter school is gonna be built, please give me advance notice so I can put my house up for sale and get out of there. So, obviously, it's a significant issue. I think that we're all united in our fight to try and do what's right and put in a location that would be more appropriate. I have my reservations about the motivation with regards to that site and how that came to fruition. But that's a conversation, I suspect, for another day. So, we'll talk about this a little bit more when Keith gets back. And that's essentially what direction that you all want to go with regards to this issue. Listen, I saw Steve at Publix a week ago. I saw the chili powder. I saw the butcher go back in the back and get the best beef that he could find. The beans, I know that he shipped them in from, I believe, Chili. So I'm telling you that he's got a secret recipe, and he's working very, very hard to dethrone you this year, Gary. And we're talking about, obviously, the chili cook-off out at Rolling Oaks Park this weekend. I'm sorry, Sunshine, I'm sorry, the Equestrian Park. I apologize. I've got Rolling Oaks on my mind, because it is such a beautiful facility, something we're very proud of. But here at the Equestrian Park, was there last year. It's a lot of fun, a lot of good food. Hopefully, you'll be there this year. But don't let him fool you, Gary. Don't get a little complacent, because I promise you, he's working very, very hard to earn that title, earn that title this year. With that being said, that concludes my comments. That concludes item number seven. Item number eight, legal comments.
No legal comments, just happy to be here, appreciate it, and look forward to working with everyone else.
That has nothing to do with not having any legal comments. It's just a confirmation, and it's great to have you, and we welcome you, Mayor Richard, I am sure. Item number nine, administration comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Legal comments always seem to be more brief when Keith is out of town. Actually, you all did a good job of covering everything that I had on my list. The only thing I'll add to that is the FPNL situation. I want to thank Mr. Eastman, who's been very good at keeping me posted on what's going on out there. I have, I'll say, a very good understanding of the problem. And I can certainly feel for the challenges that he's had in trying to make inroads into FPNL. Obviously, from our position here, we have a little different entree and some different people that we're in the process of reaching out to. But I just want to assure you all that we'll use whatever resources we have to try to help the residents out there and get some correction to that problem. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. And Doug, we concluded one through nine, and I know that you had asked for consideration about changing the discussion item, number 18, and moving it forward. And I suspect that's probably what you would like to do.
That's exactly what I'm gonna ask. If you don't mind, if we can move the discussion item 18, because we do have some vets here, to just discuss this and see what we can do. So I'd greatly appreciate if you guys can move that to the front. So I'd like to make a motion, if somebody would...
Again, you want to move item number 18 and bring it up now ahead of item number 10.
Second.
Motion in a second to move item 18 to now. Russell, call the question, please.
Councilmember Rykers?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, no problem. Item number 18 again is a discussion item, disabled veteran solid waste exemption. Doug, and I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, a couple of things. Let me give you a little bit of history on how this came about. I brought it up in council member comment. The mayor happened to be out of that meeting. And it wasn't very well received, but I'd like to explain how it came about. We have a handful of veterans that are 100% disabled that live in our town. One of those veterans approached me and asked me if I would come forward, that we already do things for them, and that we don't waive the solid waste fee, and if we could. So I told him that I would bring it forward for discussion and see what you all think about it and what the circumstances are. Andy, if you'd jump in for one quick second. In all those cities, in Broward County and towns, how many already presently, is it six out of 37 that do something? Or do you happen to...
Actually, that information's in the backup memo. Let me just, if I may, just flip to that for a moment.
Okay. Appreciate your help. In the meantime, I'll tell you, Dana Beach has 32 veterans, Lighthouse Point has 23 veterans, Miramar has 94 veterans, Pembroke Pine has 169 veterans, Southwest Ranches has nine, and Wilton Manners has 11.
Councilmember, if I may, the cities that you just mentioned, those are the municipalities that provide a break, a relief from fire assessment fees for 100% disabled veterans. We also work through the property appraiser's office, because we wanted to find out which municipalities, if any, offered a break on solid waste fees to 100% disabled veterans. And through the property appraiser's office, we weren't able to find any. However, however, there are only about 13 of the 31 municipalities in Broward County who assess via the tax bill for solid waste fees. So it's a very limited sample that we had, because the other cities that may not bill for solid waste on their tax bill may do it on their water bills. There may be a utility charge where they may charge monthly for those fees. So that information, we don't have. But through the property appraiser's web, property appraiser's office, none of the municipalities currently that are offering the 100% fee waiver to disabled veterans on the fire fee offer that on the solid waste.
Okay. And Marty, if I could ask you, what is the amount of dollar that we waive for the veterans at present? What is that total? And if we were to add the solid waste to that or include it, what additional amount of money would that be?
Thank you, councilmember. My name is Martin Sherwood.
Go ahead, Marty.
Financial. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The research that Andy has performed and I have reviewed included getting the detail by the nine parcels that presently qualified for the 100% exemption. So my guesstimate on the last discussion was about $3,500. The exact amount is $3,820.74, which coincidentally is pretty much close to the same that we presently grant to the disabled, to the disabled veterans within the fire exemption. So we're looking at about a $3,500 to $4,000 annual benefit moving forward. The number is, can go up and down, because until the final roll becomes certified in July, it could be plus one, minus one. It doesn't vary much from year to year. When Andy and I started three years ago, we had seven for two years. We had eight the last one year. And we have one more addition for this year, is nine. So the numbers are exact for the impact at $3,820.74.
Okay. The other thing I'd like to clarify is that this exemption that we do presently, and the one that's being asked about, is strictly for 100% disabled veterans from the military. It's not that they became disabled after they left the military. Has nothing to do with anything like that. So these are people that have served this country, every one of us, black, white, yellow, blue, whatever color you want to be. They've served this country. And they put their life on the line, in whatever fashion it was. So I want you guys to realize, what they're asking and what they're coming to ask of us is not a single person who has a disability that hasn't done anything for anybody. These are people that have served the country, put their life on the line, or at least had the opportunity to step up to put their life on the line. So I want you to realize what the discussion is related to and about. So, the resident asked me to bring this forward. I told him I would. So here it is, and looking for you all's input. And Mayor, if you'd let them speak, that would be great.
Listen, thanks, Doug. And I think we all have some comments with regards to this item. And I'll let you know, I've done some research, and what's evolved is part of that research, and really no consistent policy out there, with the exception of a couple of things. But if it's all right with you, council, and I know we're violating Robert's rules, this is a discussion item and it's not required, but we value input. So whenever it gets to a point where public is involved in providing us with input and comment, Richard, we violate Robert's rules. So for that, I don't think we apologize, but just want to give it to you as an FYI. So if there are any, anybody here that would like to speak on this item, we ask you to try to wrap it up within two minutes, because I know Doug has given me a list. There's four on that list, and I suspect that there's others. But we just ask that to complete your comments within the two-minute timeframe. Thank you. Noel?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I have only two questions. One is what is the, that money has to be made up somewhere. What is it going to be for the rest of the town? Is it a dollar, $2, whatever it is? I'd just like to know what that number is. And number two, I'd like for these exemptions to be only for those that have homestead exemption, because in another municipality, they were giving the discount for a different item. And they didn't put in homestead exemption. And absentee landlords who had 100% disability were using it while they rented out the property. And I'd like for it only to have homestead exemption.
Hi, council. John Eastman, 188th Avenue. The number and the amount, the dollar figure is not important. It's the principle here. The federal government takes care of the vets. The county, I believe they don't pay any property taxes.
That's true.
Right? So they're not paying the fire. But it's just beyond the realm of this council to use the power you have of taxation and then turn it into charity. That's not what you're here for. You're here to provide the basic government functions to the residents and tax them the exact amount that it costs to provide the best deal you can possibly do, which you guys do a pretty good job. But you're not here to tax me and take money from my pocket and give it to the charity of your choice. Now, this might be a very good charity, but it's still charity. And that's not, that's not up to the government. That's up to the churches and me as an individual, as I'm able to. If there's a vet in our town that needs somebody to pay his trash bill, and he's having a problem with that, I'll write him a check. But it should not be forged on me out of my taxes. There are people that have a hard time paying these taxes, that have to leave this town when they retire, because they can no longer afford to live here. And this is just another example of death by a thousand cuts. It's a hundred bucks here, 50 bucks there. The next thing you know, you're paying $7,000, $8,000 a year in taxes. It's a slippery slope that has no bottom. There's a huge issue, too, with fairness about it. And I'm not gonna cover that, because somebody else will. You'll get an earful on that. But your function is not to provide charity with my tax money. Thank you.
Gosh, I want to go home and have fun. Anyways, listen, I know you all are trying to do a good thing. I'm five generations of military. I am the colonel's granddaughters. And I will explain this to the military. They are federally employed. They sign a contract, they sign an agreement. They are also paid under disability. And I'm not gonna put, not the school, that knows exceptional students. You are quite aware of that. If anybody doesn't understand this, I will not do discrimination in this town. This is a government entity. This is not a charity entity. This is not Special Olympics. This is not a nonparticular organization of what we call the American Legion, which, if you'd like to donate some land, I'll be more than happy to have that happen. Okay? But let me explain this. They were federally employed. They get quite a good disability. The only thing they don't pay for is livelihood. And what we are not gonna do is start telling people to pay for their livelihoods. Because you could be rich, or you could be in at least a well-to-do living situation. And I am not gonna put on this floor a disabled child, okay, that was born that way. Or a child, or a person that was in a car accident. Or a person that was employed and that business went out of business. And that other person over there, okay? I'm not gonna sit there and say, but they were federally employed by the federal government. And I'm sorry, this town is obligated to our police and our fire department, because they hire them. And that's where they're responsible for disability in that sense. Now, I do agree, we should help the disabled. That means bathrooms, that means facilities, that means computers, that means speech specialists, that means anything we can provide, braille, whatever it takes to help them. Yes, indeed. But are we going to pay for their livelihoods out of your pockets? Because, I'll tell you what, there's a lot more than you just calculated. Because I just graduated from Cooper City High School, my dears, and 750 graduates out of there lived out here in Southwest Ranches. And I did a reunion. And I bought them all water pistols, because they joined the National Guard. And unfortunately, they wanted to be Rambo, and instead, they ended up getting pulled into Desert Storm. You wanna know how many of them are disabled? And by the federal government law, and believe me, you will know as an attorney, that I love those college kids, because they beat the heck out of us in the state law. And when it comes to those disabled people, I don't put one against another. I don't group them. I don't separate them. They're all equal under the law. And we are to treat everyone the same and accompany, accompany anything we can for them. So please, please, remember that we could all be disabled, we could all be in a car accident. But we didn't sign an agreement to do that. We didn't sign a contract to be employed to do that. And that is my end result. So please, understand, we can give them things like not fine them for pickup. We can do things like let them have the parks and recreations without charge, so they can do functions. We can do things, and that's what should be up for discussion, to help them. And whatever means that they need is special needs.
Okay, we gotta finish up, sweetheart.
You got it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
This is not charity, folks. Every veteran in this room, in this town, at some point in their life, they signed a blank check made out to this country that it was payable up to and including their life. If you wanted our life, we put it out there for you. And we accept your freedom of speech, because we would walk through the gates of hell carrying gasoline to ensure that you have the right for your freedom of speech. But it is not charity. And as far as the VA taking care of us, John, if you think that FPNL is some monstrosity that you can't deal with, then by God, you've never set foot in the VA. We laced up our boots and we put on a uniform to go serve this nation. And because of that service, Doug was wrong. Some of us became 100% after we left the military, which was very interesting, because we had LLS here tonight. I have blood cancer, thank you, Agent Orange. I was supposed to, you guys missed out, I was supposed to... I was supposed to, you guys missed out, I was supposed to live 29 to 48 months, but by God, somehow, I outlived them. And there's others here. We have an Iraqi veteran back here. There's a Vietnam, you were? Vietnam, 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 and Vietnam myself. It ain't charity, people. It's going to cost you about $1, $2 on your tax bill. And I'm sorry.
We're all here for this.
Yeah. Well, I was a volunteer. I'm sorry. He was drafted.
We just, the speaker has the floor, please. Nope. Nope.
Barry Nunzick, 163rd and Sterling. First of all, my heart's, my hat's off to anybody who went in the military. I had three brothers who went in the military. I was either lucky enough or unlucky enough, depends on how you look at it, I didn't go. I was 4F, because I had a heart condition. When it comes to giving somebody something, it's always a tough decision. It's real easy to say, yeah, give it to them. That's the easiest thing in the world to do. I know I looked through the tax rolls. I know somebody who's never been in the military, just happens to be totally disabled. And I looked at that person's tax bill for their property, and their tax bill went from, this was in 2006, it was $2,460. And in 2007, went down to $72. So they get extremely large savings on their tax bill. I'm assuming that all these 100% disabled veterans are getting reductions that are similar to that on their main tax bills. And if they do, they're looking at the savings already, depending on their house, of course, and of $5,000, $6,000 a year. I mean, it's a substantial amount of money. And certainly more than enough to cover their waste. Okay? It's their garbage. You know, they should at least pay for their own garbage bill. Like I say, they're already getting such a wonderful substantial reduction from the county, that this should not be a burden to them. It really shouldn't. Thank you.
I am Gloria Murphy. I live in Green Meadows. I am the spouse of a Vietnam veteran. I am the, is it on now?
You can take it off, or they're, just you got to speak a little close to it.
I'm the spouse of a Vietnam veteran. Our livelihood has been changed since the war. A car accident is nothing like being blown up with a landmine. You have no idea. They gave their lives so we could be free, so we could do whatever we wanted to do. This gesture, I think, is truly amazing. Whether you decide to do this or not, for the nine veterans in our town, is up to you. But back in 2011, someone brought this up again, because when I received a discount on our fire and police assessments, I was so amazed, and so shocked, and so thrilled that someone thought enough to do something for these veterans who are willing, and some did, and some are truly devastated, for our country. And I think that's all I have to say before I start crying. I understand where you're coming from. I don't want to help the illegals. I don't want to help the people who, and I feel really sorry for the people that are born that way, but these men went to war, whether they wanted to or not, for this country. And some of them threw no, they were just like with these IUDs now, they were just, it just happens. And they're so devastated. And if you go into a veteran's hospital and see these brain injuries, and see these men, you have a completely different thought and a complete respect for these men who, when they came back from Vietnam, had no respect. Thank you.
Uh, gay staples. It's a dollar. How much? I wouldn't, well, I'm a fighter. I guess I would pick up a gun and go over there. But these people knew when they went, whether or not they chose to go, or whether or not they were sent, because they pulled the wrong number. They had two choices when they got over. Fight or flight. They fought. And some of them didn't make it. They died. And some came back never the same. I don't have a problem with this, and I'm a taxpayer. And if it meant $10 out of my, I had to pay $10 more, I'd pay it willingly. We're never going to be in a point where we're not going to have to fight. And if we don't take care of our veterans, and if we don't look after them, how many are going to pick up a gun and go over there and defend us? Not many. My daughter-in-law's father was in the military. I want to tell you, the VA did not do much for him, and he was severely injured. And he eventually passed away. There was a gentleman that was a blacksmith here. I don't know how many of you knew him. But here, Breithop was his name. He lived in Sunshine Ranches. He had Agent Orange. Nobody knew. The VA here in the state of Florida denied it. He went to Tennessee, and guess what? He got help. They recognized that he had Agent Orange. He's dead now. He died from it, young. He should still be alive. My advice to you is do what your heart says, not what people who are afraid that you might be taxing somebody else a buck. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Robert Brightwig, and I just want to bring up one little point here. Seems to be concerned about the $2, $3. It's a depreciating tax. We're dying off. Don't worry about it. In decades, it will be gone.
Mike Canley, 205 Avenue. I was in Vietnam. The Tonkin-Golf Resolution was made by Lyndon Johnson. But I was in the military in 1962. For gay to say that people made the decision to go there and fight or flight is incorrect. I was exposed to Agent Orange. I ended up with cancer. The VA, it took months and years to get them to recognize that I, as a pilot on a carrier, did actually go into Vietnam on the land and was exposed to Agent Orange. They said, you didn't have orders to be there, and denied me for years and years and years. And when I finally did have a heart attack and cancer, it gave me 30% disability. Wow. Here you got people that are 100% disabled, and you're talking about a pittance. It's not a gift. It's not a charity. It's a payback for your freedom. They deserve it. You should do it.
I'm Mayor Councilman, Joe Dykes, 170th Avenue. I'm a Vietnam veteran. I was drafted at 18 years old. I was in Vietnam before I was 19 years old. They handed me an M16 rifle and told me, go out and defend your country. I did that for one year. When I came back, there was people off the airport with signs saying, we were murderers, child killers. Now, we're not looking for these little few dollars. It's nothing. We just want some respect from our town, for our veterans that live here in Southwest Ranches. The money's not an issue. It's the respect that you want to give us, as veterans, which we get up every day and can live in the land of the free and the home of the brave. Thank you.
It is a discussion item, but we open it up to the public. Anybody else wish to comment on this item? Okay, see you none. Public comment in violation of Roberts' Rules of Order is now over.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel, you're welcome, Doug. Again, this is a discussion item, and where it goes from here ultimately is something that we all have to decide. And it is difficult. And I'm sure that, speaking on behalf of everybody that's up here, on behalf of all of us, we appreciate your service to this country. We appreciate what you've, what you've done, and respect and admire, you know, what you did and what you accomplished. Anytime I see a servicemember in a uniform, I always take the time to go over and shake their hand and tell them thank you for their service to our, to our country. I think that that's, that's something that's very important. So with regards to our appreciation and gratitude, I don't think that we can say enough about, about that. This is something that, quite frankly, you know, trying to do some research on it, you'd like to see the precedent, and, you know, you'd like to make a decision that, I suspect that if we did a lot of things from the heart, there's a lot of things that we probably would do differently, and these are some very, very difficult issues. And this is a difficult issue as, as well. So from that perspective, you know, you know, how do I feel? I mean, it's easy to say, let's, let's, let's do this. There's so few, and from a financial perspective, why not? So let's take a look at what the reality is. And again, this has nothing to do with anything about trying to put things in perspective. We know now that once you're 100% disabled, or classified as 100% disabled, Broward County Property Appraiser, whatever the process is to get that reduction, allows those in that category, 100%, they don't have to pay their ad valorem taxes. They don't have to pay anything in all the different taxing entities, whether it's the school board, whether it's a municipality, whether it's a hospital district. So that exists right now. And that is one of the things that's extended to our service members that are 100% disabled. In the town of Southwest Ranches, with regards to our fire fee, that is no longer required to be, to be paid. And in the context of things and how it came before, and I appreciate your honesty, Doug, and how this, this evolved. I mean, it's, you know, it's a very difficult issue. You know, it's heart-wrenching. And again, it has nothing to do with anything but our respect and admiration for, not only for the veterans that are here that served our country so admirably, and how much we appreciate that, but now, the people that are over there. We have, you know, kids that, listen, I lost, when I say I lost, you know, being over at Cypress Bay High School, we've lost a handful of kids over there in Iraq, and Afghanistan. You know, the kids that went over there and volunteered to serve this country. And were killed over there defending the principles of democracy and protecting us. And it's something that's very, very difficult. So, you know, and you try to, you take, you take a look, and I know that Andy, you did a lot of research, and we take a look at what other municipalities are doing, only to get some kind of a foundation, some understanding. And, you know, it's not, it's not real clear. It is consistent with regards to ad valorem. It is pretty consistent with regards to the, the fire fee, but with regards to some of the other scenarios, it just, it really isn't clear. I mean, there's some that require, and Noel, you bring up a good point, because it is a requirement for some others, that property has to be homesteaded, that there are some threshold or benchmarks with regards to the value of the, of the property. There's things that are established with regards to household income, you know, ability to, to pay. And quite frankly, and John, you know, brought up a good point, and I agree with you. If there's a veteran out there that can't pay his or her fire fee, you know, I agree with you, write a check for him right away. So it's a question of, you know, not only policy, because we have to make a choice, but, you know, from the heart. And again, it's very, very difficult. When you make decisions from the heart, you know, it, from an emotional perspective, it's, it's a tough choice and a tough decision, you know. Marty confirmed, you know, approximately $3,700. And do we convey this as a, as gratitude for their service to our country? Is that why we waive it? Because I'm sure that there are veterans here that have no problems financially paying, you know, the taxes that they're required to pay. So we got to differentiate between the two, you know, with regards to policy, what's out there, what, what others do. Or do we do it just because it's in our heart, that's how we feel, we should, you know, something that we should do? Should we just say that, you know, because that's how we feel? And listen, I got to tell you, you know, you get, it brings you to tears, you know, some of these different scenarios. So do we do it because we recognize they've serviced our country? And do we eliminate it that way? Or, you know, from a policy standpoint, and trying to balance the two? It's very, very difficult, you know? And, you know, I'm not sure. I, like I said, started the research on this. This came to my attention, you know, not that long ago. But if you take a look at what's happened in the municipalities, what happened at the county level, what's happened at the state level, what's happened in the federal level, you know, it just varies tremendously. There's a variety of scenarios out there and how this is, this is addressed. And again, with regards to ad valorem, if you're 100% disabled, they don't pay any taxes. And then the town, you know, at this present day, they renew it every year, but they do get, I want to say a break, but they don't pay the fire assessment fee. So, listen, my heart says yes, but policy says I'm confused, because I don't, I don't really, I don't really know. You know, I, I don't really know. What I do know is that, again, all of us, respect and appreciate the service and defense of this country. We can't thank you enough for that. And, you know, again, this is a very difficult issue, and, you know, ultimately, we'll decide, but interested in feedback from you all with regards to this, and try and decide and determine, you know, what we, what we want to do, because it is very, very difficult. You know, it's just two different dynamics. And again, we're all on the same page about our respect and admiration for our veterans that have gone over there and defended this country in the democratic process. So, open it up to, to you all, and try to get some feedback. Putting us on the spot, I don't like to be put on the spot, you know, quite frankly. You know, it's very, very difficult, especially something that, you know, of, you know, in this, this area, and I hear oh, well, and, you know, sometimes maybe we could do it a little differently, that have an opportunity to contemplate it, to evaluate it, to review it, to do our research on it. And, you know, it's, how it was presented, how it was, it was approached, I'm not sure it was the best mechanism, but you know what? That's the reality, is that's where we are. So I'll leave it up to you, counsel, with regards to your feedback, to see if we can come up with a consensus and decide where we want to go with this, if you want to do it tonight. You know, if you need some additional time, by all means. I suggest that is, as well, from my perspective, too. I probably would like a little additional time is, is, as well. So Freddie, I know that you had a comment.
Me?
Yeah, I thought that you wanted to say something.
Well, I, yeah, I, I didn't raise my hand, but I do, do have a couple of comments. It's a very difficult situation, because, you know, like I say, as I came up during that time when I didn't have to serve. I was too young for the World War II. Kind of Korea came around. I had too many kids, you know? So anyway, I haven't had the experience that some of these people have gone through, and I've listened to them. I got a lot of personal friends of mine that... I've got a lot of personal friends of mine that I've heard some weird, weird stories. So it's a bad situation. But being an elected official, I have to look at this thing in a different light. Like, you know, I've got, a lot of my family are firemen. Those guys are putting their life on the line every day too. Here is nothing, you know, like, I don't know how many of y'all did, but when that first airplane hit that first tower, I came in the house, and I was, watched the second plane hit that second tower, and I seen what happened, and I turned to my wife and I said, "They just killed 350 firemen," because they were on the way up those stairs with hoses. So these guys are putting their life on the line every day too. It's the thing, so you have to make a decision here. Where do you make that decision? And it's tough, but I guess that's why you look at us. But it is, it's a tough decision. I've seen some people come back. I know, at the time, I was a teenager, but I had three sisters, and seemed like all they dated were sailors. And I would get to talk to these guys, and I talked to one gentleman who was at, there when Japan hit them, and some of those stories that he told me of what happened over there when that morning. And so it's a hard decision that you have to make, but I don't know. I've got to think about it.
Yeah, this is a difficult, difficult issue to address. You know, it's kind of puts you in a situation where if you, you know, if you have questions about it, then it kind of puts you in a situation where you're not showing respect towards veterans, and that's the last thing I know that any of us want to do up here. Understand what was on the line when you're a veteran, when you serve this country, especially through some very tumultuous times during those years. But it doesn't, regardless, if you're a veteran and you served, and that's, you know, you put your life on the line, no matter what circumstance it was in, or what, whether you were, you know, where you were deployed. So this is very difficult, you know, as has been said. The big thing for me is trying to understand where you draw the line. You know, you, the, I think about, I think about those that did not come back. I think about, you know, the widows or widowers there. Why are we giving, why would we give to 100% and not give to those? You know, that's huge. They're, you know, so if someone's 90% disabled, if they're a veteran that went through and served without, were fortunate enough to do their service and come back in one piece, and fine, and through some other tragedy, get 100% disabled, I just have a difficult, you know, time, understanding where that proper line is. So I, you know, like we said, it's a difficult decision, difficult decision, situation to kind of work through all the details and do what's right for the veterans that have incredible amount of respect for, and at the same time fulfill the duties of, you know, the custodianship for all the residents of the town, so.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very serious subject. Just a couple bona fides. I come from a military family. My father was a disabled vet. I spent the first 16 years of my life in the military, on air bases all over the world. I have a unique perspective on military life. The sacrifices that the family and the veterans make, you can't even begin to realize that kind of life. And I won't go into, I won't go in and bore everybody with details, but it's a very interesting life, trust me. Since this came up in, just a brief history, back in 2010 and 11, one of our disabled vets asked us to waive the fire fee. And we all listened to it, with all due respect, and then we went forward with it, and then it got dropped, and it got lost in the shuffle somehow. And he came back and reminded us of it. And I felt really, really at a loss, because we had technically made the decision, but then we didn't follow through. And I bird dogged it and spent hours researching where the decision was made, so that I could speak with intelligence when it came back up. And it turned out it was at a budget meeting that was not recorded. I found it in my notes after going through file, you know, I was the newly minted council member back then, and I was, you know, bird dogging it like no tomorrow. And the interesting thing that I came up with researching it again was on the fire fee, it's an annual exemption. It's not automatic. It can be taken away every year, or it can be granted every year. And so I just want to emphasize that. It's not automatic. We do it because we honor our veterans. Since this was brought up last meeting, I have been running around asking casual people throughout the town, and I get the same reply every time. Where does it stop? It wasn't? Does anybody deserve it? Not deserve it? It was where do you draw the line? Where do you stop? And, you know, under the guise of, everybody deserves a tax break somehow, through some way, whether they have disabled children, whether they're widowed, whether, you know, where do you stop it at? And that's really where we're at. And I'm up in the air on this one. I can honestly say that I'm up in the air. We grant the fire fee tax exemption. Broward County grants, I believe, 100% everywhere else. It's a tough decision, and I don't have an answer for it right now. I really don't. So that's, you know, I started asking myself, is this the role of local government? Is this not our role? Yeah, we have the power to do it, but do we have the right to do it and the authority to do it, to penalize the other residents? Because that's, in essence, what you're doing, but it's not really a penalty, it's just a monetary amount, you know? So I don't want to trivialize it by any stretch of the imagination. You know, I just found to a large degree, the people that I've talked to so far, and this may change tomorrow, did not support this, that I had asked or came to me out of nowhere, you know, saying, "I do not support this." So I just want to mention that, and I'm still, I'm up in the air on it. I really am. You know, I was 100% go-forward on the fire fee. I thought it was the right thing to do. There was precedent setting, other municipalities did it. You know, it wasn't like we were setting any new ground here or anything like that. And on the garbage fee, we've researched it, and we can't find anybody that does it, you know? So that's where I'm really up in the air on that. That's all.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, Doug.
I got to tell you kind of where I stand on it, and just why I think so. All of us are getting older. We're going to lose more of our vets. I know the ones that lost their life, that didn't come back, what do you do for them? Well, they signed up, or were chosen, or got the draft, and they lost their life. But these are ones that are still here, or came back, and are still hanging on. So I've got to tell you, in my own personal opinion, I would say, and my father fought in World War II, was a bomber pilot. I would tell you, for the amount of money, and I realize we're not a charity organization, but I think I would rather, as a small town that we are, and with as few vets as we have, be a leader, not a follower. And not only move forward and do this, but I think we should challenge other cities or towns to do the exact same thing. So that's my opinion.
Again, it's a tough, and you're absolutely right, and very eloquently said, everybody that's up here. And, you know, in conversation with others as well, you know, where's it stop? I'm sure that we have residents that live in this community that are 100% disabled that aren't vets. I know that homes have been foreclosed on because of lost a job, a death in the family. We can talk about a whole bunch of different scenarios where people have, you know, very difficult circumstances, and as a result of that, financially, you know, terrible things happened, you know, and happen. But listen, if it's from the heart, you know, I know what all of us would do, but from a policy standpoint, you know, we have an obligation and responsibility. And taking a look and doing the research, you know, there really isn't a consistent policy. What I do know, and we all know, that there is no doubt about that, if you qualify 100% disability as a veteran, you don't pay ad valorem taxes. And as Gary said, while it's not automatic, but, you know, we waive the fire assessment fee. So when does it stop and what we do? I'm not going to put you on the spot. I get the feedback, and I hear what you're saying. I mean, from my perspective, that you'd like some opportunity to think about this. None of us should be put in this spotlight, I don't think, under these circumstances. I think that we could do a better job and be better prepared when, you know, when this thing came forward. But I hear what you're saying, and I believe you'd like some more opportunity to do some research and self-reflect, and get feedback from others. And so what I'm hearing, that it's pretty unanimous, Doug, and I don't, I know that you brought it forward, and we hear how you feel, but there's four others that haven't made up their mind yet. Obviously, from the heart, I know what everybody would like to do, but from a policy perspective and doing the research and dealing with what reality is, that's the conflict. And like I said, if we led with our hearts on a lot of these issues, I suspect things would be different. There's a lot of things that are emotionally charged, it's very, very difficult. But we still have an obligation and responsibility, because it is precedent and it is a policy to, you know, make those choices and decisions, because that's what we are, we're the policymakers. So with that being said, I'd like, you know, everybody to have some time to self-reflect and do their research and get feedback. I know everybody has started, and then I promise you, Doug, we'll bring this back up at a later date, sometime in the near future. And I know you won't let us forget about it, I'm sure of that, and I understand that. But it's quite clear to me that none of us want to be put on the spot at this time, and we'd like to have an opportunity to do some more, not only self-reflection, but to take a look at the policy and what exists out there and get feedback from the residents. I do want to say, on behalf of this council, we appreciate those that came here to talk about this item. We appreciate your feedback. We appreciate your input. It is important to us, and it does matter. And again, we will, obviously, this will be back before sometime in the near future. We encourage you to come back, but we're just saying that we need more time, and that's what everybody is saying. So I respect everybody up here that is requesting that, and I'm not putting anybody on the spot at this time. Give you some opportunity to go back and reevaluate, and then we will come forward with something, I am sure, in the future. Freddie?
Yeah, Jeff, you know, this is something that coming up, and I think it needs study. Andy, is there any way that we could set up something, you know, save a certain amount of fund or some kind, and see how many, have people come in and see how many people we got out there that actually need help? You know, we're just saying, I don't say come up here and just say, "Because you're this, you're going to get X amount of money." We need to know how big a problem we've got out there. Do we have people that are going hungry because they were in the service or whatever or something? We need to know what the problem really is. And maybe we could set up something in that, and if we see that, then maybe we could do what other government agency does, is like every building permit comes through, set a little bit of money aside out of everything until you build up a fund that these people could apply for. But really, we don't know, I've heard a few people talk here tonight, but we don't know how big a problem it is out there.
Andy, you're right, Freddie, that's a good point. And, you know, the bill that he to pay, you're absolutely right. And again, if you take a look and start doing the research, you know, there are thresholds for property value, there are thresholds for income, there's, excuse me, there's percentages. And again, it's not a situation where a benefit hasn't been conveyed already. You know, we're talking about one specific assessment, and that's garbage. You know, we've already, you know, provided that exemption with the assessment fee Broward County Property Appraiser, doesn't require any ad valorem taxes to be paid. So it's not a situation where there isn't a recognition by all of many, many, many governmental entities and agencies recognizing their contributions and wanting to give back with regards to their appreciation. But it really isn't consistent with the exception of the ad valorem and the fire fee. And again, as Gary pointed out, and I know Andy doing the research, there's no other municipalities that, as far as we know, that currently provide an exemption for solid wait services. There isn't anybody. And there's a reason for that, obviously, you know? And I know that we're going to find out, get some feedback, and try to figure that out, do the best we can under the circumstances to make a decision that we think is appropriate under the circumstances. So with that being said, thank you all that we're here to talk about this item. We appreciate the input. It does mean something, and in the very near future, I am sure that it'll be on the agenda, and we will come up with a decision. Thank you all. And again, thank you all for your service to our country.
Thank you, Doug.
All right, that concludes...
Water District waived all the fees.
Okay. Listen, thank you. Item number 10, this is an ordinance that's second reading. Again, I do not believe, and Andy will tell us, that there are no what changes. For the record, please, Russell, would you read item number 10, this ordinance on a second reading?
An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, adopting the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2015 through 2019 pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is second reading. This was passed at our previous meeting. This is an update of our annual five-year plan. There are, as we covered in the last meeting, there are no substantive changes. We're just updating the dates to keep our five-year plan current.
Thank you, Andy. Council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second approve. Any members of public wish to comment on this item? See no pub, yes, we do. Barry?
Good evening, gentlemen. Barry Nunzio, 163rd and Sterling Road. I may have this all wrong. If I do, send me back to the bench. But I was looking through the budget for the next five years, and I see things on there that were discussed, and I thought that they were dropped. There was an item for, let's see, all right, $50,000 a year for 10 years for a new fire engine. These are $50,000 or $60,000 a year, depending which page you look at. One was Page 11, one was Page 7. I mean, if that was something that was discussed previously and I thought was dropped from the consideration as far as buying a new fire engine for $600,000.
Okay. We'll answer the question for you.
Okay. The other thing is, I think you guys, you know, you need to remember that, and this is on the five-year plan, but we are a small town, and you should go over the five-year plan. I see things in there, one other thing that's in there is some kind of boat dock on the C-11 Canal. Do we really need a little dock on the C-11 Canal for $100,000? You know, we're a small town, 7,600 people, have to pay for everything that you guys want to do, and it just raises our taxes higher and higher, and it's getting out of line. Thanks so much.
Noel Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. This here is a snapshot of the October 1st budget as of October 1st, not now. This is what goes into the Conference of Plan as the five-year plan of the October 1st budget. So...
And you're required by the state to do it every year. Right.
Happens since then, will appear in the next October 1st budget five-year plan. So, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Noel. Any other public comment on this item? See no further public comment. Public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing none, call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 12. Item number 12. For the record, resolution, Russell?
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an authorization to proceed with Winningham and Fradley, Inc. for surveying services for Phase 1 of the transportation surface and drainage, ongoing rehabilitation, or TIS Door roadway improvements, authorizing the mayor to execute the authorization to proceed and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment. Public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? And just for the record, again, this is for the survey work for Southwest 205th Avenue for a total of $2,537, and for the survey work for 208, 209, 210th at $13,933. And again, this was bids that we took, was it, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, Mayor, both this item, number 12 and 13, both of these items are with firms that we have previously approved continuing services contracts with at pricing that council has accepted. When we accepted those agreements, just due to the dollar amount, we wanted to bring it back before council, let you take formal action.
And again, it's survey work and engineering work. This is a survey work. Steve?
Yeah, just a quick comment that when we, you know, when we went through our budget process and we had an increase of millage for this project, well, this is the first starting where we're going to be applying that money to the project to actually get it done. So your money is going to work.
Thank you, Steve, for mentioning that. Okay. Again, we have a motion and a second to approve, and no additional question, comments, or concerns. Call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Breitker?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 13. Again, this is engineering work, same set of circumstances as 12, with the exception of the scope of the work.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any members of the council wish to, or council, any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment. I'm a little bit out of practice. I missed the last meeting. See no public comment. Public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, counsel? Seeing none, Russell, call the question, please.
Mayor, I believe I have to read the item first, so I'm going to go ahead and do that.
I thought you did.
No, I read 12.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Sorry. For the record, the resolution, I'm out of sync. I apologize.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a work authorization with Erdman Anthony of Florida, Inc. for engineering services related to Phase 1 of the transportation surface and drainage, ongoing rehabilitation, TIS Door roadway improvements, authorizing the mayor to execute the work authorization and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Again, I apologize for that. Again, we have a motion and a second to approve. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Breitker?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 14. Again, the resolution for the record, Russell. Thank you.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order to Bennett Fire Products Company, Inc. in the amount of $44,022 to purchase 23 sets of personal protective equipment to replace expired or expiring gear, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. If I may, the bunker gear, which is the protective gear that firefighters wear when they go into a fight, has a 10-year lifespan on it. The equipment that we have is, as the resolution implies, either out of date or approaching end of date. This is not additional funds for the fire department. This is within the budget that you passed and accepted for the volunteer fire department. We're just asking you to approve the expenditure, and Chief Bennett is here if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Andy. Counsel?
I do have one question. Is it a coincidence that this is the same name?
Yeah.
Okay. I was going to add the same question.
Lee, come on. I have a couple of quick questions, if you don't mind coming up, Lee. I don't know, we haven't had a motion or a second yet. Let me ask you a question. With regards to 23 sets, how did you come up with that number?
We currently have 23 sets that we own, 10 are expiring this year, and then we have additional sets expiring in the next couple of years.
Thank you, Lee. I appreciate that confirmation. With regards to these pricing, these certification sheets, and I went through all of them, and most of them across that, with the exception of about five, and I'm trying to figure out in my mind which is for what, because I assume that the ones that are filled out are the ones that apply for the purchase of these sets of bunker gear. And the other thing that really inspired me to think about this, the discount differential varies anywhere from 10% to 40%. I mean, I'd love to see 40% applied to all the items. So if you can just clarify that for me and the rest of the council, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we currently piggybacked off the Broward Sheriff's Office contract, which they extended force for this particular purchase, which ended up being off the retail price 50%.
Okay. And again, just going through this real quickly, Lee, on page 28, American Firewear. What is that? What component is part of the, is a part of the bunker gear is that?
I...
With a 22% discount?
You know, I can't say.
Not sure. Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Leslie procured this, so...
Yeah, I've, these are all marked Leslie, so I'll even let you have that. This is the first one. Let me, if, I just, you can bring this for the record, so everybody knows Leslie. And again, it's just for clarification, I just want to make sure I understand, you know...
Yeah, for purchasing, we always get at least three other quotes, or two other quotes. So the reason that we did that, this is the same company that we've gotten the bunker gear from for the last probably 10, 11 years.
Okay, so let me ask you a question, because there's five different quotes in there, but it's not consistent with regards to, you know, it doesn't say specifically for the bunker gear. Like for the one that I just showed you, American Firewear, maybe that's a manufacturer or the one that produces the bunker gear, and I guess that must...
There are many manufacturers. The one that we've gone with is through Bennett is Globe, which is an excellent bunker gear and with a 50...
So let me, I just make this real simple. American Firewear, Karns and Brother, I assume, again, these were ones that submitted proposals. Globe?
Yeah, I think the Karns is for fire helmets. It's probably all protective bunker, protective gear.
Okay, here's where I'm confused. I just want to make sure that I understand. And the reason that, again, it was a discount, you know, it went anywhere from 10% to 42%. I love 42%, because that's four times more than the one that commits to 10%. I just want to have an understanding with regards to this process, soliciting this information and getting these prices, what they apply to. That's all. I mean, you saw the one with regards to American Firewear, and I assume that that's for bunker gear. American Firewear produces these, this bunker gear. And as I go to the next one, Karns and Brother, is that specifically for the bunker gear?
I believe that's for helmets.
That's for helmets? Okay. So this one is for gear. This one is for helmets. The next one that I come across is Globe.
Globe is what we're purchasing.
Is what you're purchasing? So this is the gear that...
Is that the only item we're purchasing out of this?
We're just purchasing bunker gear, jackets and pants.
But out of the four, yeah, and that's why I was just confused. I'm just, again, I'm not doing anything other than clarifying in my mind what it all means. That's all. So this is the gear that you're purchasing it from Globe. These are the purchase for 23 sets of bunker gear.
If I may, one thing that they don't normally do, they've actually allowed us to purchase 15 sets right now to replace gear that has to be replaced, and that we can put off the purchase of other gear, because with the volunteers coming in and out, sometimes we have off sizes. So they've allowed us to go through the end of the fiscal year to make the other purchases, so that if we have somebody come in, we're not doubling up on anything or coming in for...
Right. This is the company that you're buying the bunker gear from?
That's the same.
And I'm telling you, I'm excited about it. You know why I'm excited about it? Because they offer the most discount. They're 42%. So that's a really good thing.
That's why we've stayed with them.
Okay, okay. And that's, yeah, that's why, I just, I wasn't sure, because I wasn't sure that if it's five different companies and they submitted a proposal for bunker gear, but then, you know, you look at gear and then there's helmets, I just want to get it clarified in my mind. Now I understand, and it is the highest discount, I appreciate it. So that's been clarified. Thank you. Counsel? Anybody else have any questions? Steve?
You did a good job.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Again, turn it over to public if there is any public comment on this item.
John Eastman, 188th Avenue. 23 is an odd number when we just got two guys on any one shift. I understand there's different sizes of the equipment, probably small, medium, large, maybe extra-large. I'd suggest buying two pieces of each size, and you keep that at the firehouse. And when the person comes on shift, they select the size that fits them, and they have it in standby there, ready to jump into it. The stuff that's used and expiring can be kept on for training purposes, you know, so the guys have something they can suit up with and be comfortable training with. To spend this kind of money for two guys on shift is about as much sense as buying, you know, two dozen radios at $6,000 a pop. I'd suggest running this number down. And I appreciate the piggybacking on the bids. I understand that, you know, you get quantity buys and discounts, but we don't need 23 sets. You know, two guys on shift, that's what you need to accommodate. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other members of public wish to comment on this item?
I'll put in my two cents. This discount thing, I've been running an industrial supply business for 35 years. I make my own markups, I make my own discounts. Everybody wants a discount, but you have no idea what the net reality is of that price. So do you know what a bunker gear should cost, net? So how would you know if the discount's anything?
It is spelled out there per set with a total.
No, no, but I mean, do you know what they're really worth? I mean, I didn't hear that unless I missed something, but what do they go for? We know what a shirt should sell for. This fire suit stuff is a special item. I also sell safety gear, but I got multiple prices. I could give you 50% off and still do very well. That would sound real good, and that's the way we're judging it, not on a net basis.
Again, it's a county bid, they're piggybacking off of a bid.
I offered you free radios that are back-to-back compatible with the county's current system that are P-25 compliant. I can't give stuff away, and I don't sell radios. I just know a guy that's...
Okay, we haven't purchased radios yet. We're focusing on the bunker gear.
Well, free radios, please.
Okay. Might take you up on that offer, free radios. In fact, I think we'll probably sign up for that contribution very soon. Any other members of public wish to comment on this item? Come on up, Leslie.
Just want to mention that the sizes, I wish they were small, medium, and large, and we could just do that. It isn't. The bunker gear is actually tailored to the person. I know for me, when I get bunker gear, it's shorter than normal, and the sleeves are shorter, and women have, they put a little more in the butt. I mean, they really do tailor it, because when you're going in, you've got to make sure that they're the right length, that you're not tripping over it, that when you lift your arms to pull up ceiling or something, that you're not exposing parts of your body. It really, they've come a long way in bunker gear, so we have to, we're very specific on the sizes.
What happens to that gear, Mayor, if I may?
Absolutely, Doug.
What happens to that gear once that person leaves? That you had it custom made?
It goes back into the gear that we would put other people in. We use that gear first. I mean, if someone can fit into the sizes, we'll go ahead and utilize it.
Okay.
What's the lifespan? You said 10 years, Leslie?
Fortunately, 10 years. The problem is, is after 10 years, the way they have it, we can't recertify the gear. Up till 10 years, you can send it to a company. If something happens, you can repair it to a point. They can recertify the gear, but if it gets past 10 years, they won't recertify.
Okay, thank you.
And it becomes a liability.
Thank you, Leslie.
Again, my name is Tim Felavan. As far as what you guys are talking about here, some of the laypeople don't realize what's involved in that equipment. So for them to say one size fits all, or you can go down to the warehouse and pick it up, because I can show you how the progression of those outfits have come over the years, and it is to protect that person, so you don't have injuries and stuff like that. My family's been in the fire service for a long time, and a lot of them have been burned from necks and wrists because of changing of things. Over time, uniforms and bunker gear have grown. So try not to listen to some people where they're trying to say, oh, one size will fit all, you can get this one and that one. But what, for me, won't work for Leslie. So between my arm reach and her short arms, it ain't going to happen. But just try to keep it in mind, it's for their protection in the first place, and they're not asking for a lot, and like she said, means listening. They're only going to get so much now, and then when they get certain people, they'll get it in later. It's not like you're trying to get one lump sum and someone's saying, well, why are we spending all this money on this? You know, common sense, if the police officers we have here in the city, if they all use the same gun when they got off duty, you switch it to the next guy, I don't think that would happen. So...
Good analogy.
Keep the police and keep the fire safe. It keeps us safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? See no further public comment. Public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion and a second. Any additional question, comments, or concerns, counsel? Seeing none, call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Breitker?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item 15.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, establishing usage policies for the Country Estates Park, governing rental use of the pavilion, establishing a fee schedule, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This establishes for the new Country Estates Fishing Hole Park, the leasing policy or rental policy for the pavilion on-site, and it's based on and has been modeled by what's already in place and has been proved to be effective in the Sunshine Ranches Equestrian Park. And I know December's here can answer some questions, should you have any questions for her? And I know Gabe Chapels is head of Parks Board is also here, so should council have questions, we have appropriate people to answer your questions.
Thank you, Andy. Counsel?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item?
Mayor, Counsel? I didn't review the fee schedule. Does the homeowners association have any special dispensation on any of these parks?
We'll write those questions down, and I'll have Andy answer them for you, Vince.
Say again?
I said, we'll write those questions down, and I'll have Andy, I know he's right, and we'll answer those for you. and we'll answer those for you. And yeah, there is, uh, information about what that fee, I think it's a hundred dollars for six hours and if there's any breaks. I'm not sure of that. That's a good question. We'll get, uh, answer that for you. Absolutely. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no further public comment, public comment is now closed. Again, motion, second, approve. And I know, Steve, you have a question.
I do. Um, one of the things that I think from a fee schedule standpoint, I'd like to see put in there is I would like to see where, right now, there's one set fee regardless of whether you're a resident of town or not. And, um, the residents of this town have already paid quite a bit for that park. And so I think it would be appropriate that, um, there would be a higher fee, if that's possible, for non-residents. I see it's in the other, it's in, uh, Rolling Oaks one. Go ahead. This is great. This is great.
It's good to see you up and moving around. Great to have you back, December. I know the feeling. Mine's a little different area, but I know the feeling.
Yeah, yours doesn't show so well, so you can't get all the sympathy I'm getting. Sorry, but I feel for you, Mayor. I really do.
Oh, you're so sweet.
Well, wow. I don't know how to handle this. Okay. Um, Steve, that Fishing Hole Park was paid for one hundred percent by grants from the state and the county. So we can't really charge a different fee for residents than we do for any visitor. At Rolling Oaks, we can because we didn't get one hundred percent grant money for purchase of that park. Does that make sense?
Um, it does, to a point, um, only because that, but that was just for the park itself. I mean, we've put in significant amount of funds into some of the amenities and such into that park. I don't think it's all been paid for out of county funds or state funds.
The combination of funding that came from the acquisition required certain things to be put in place, including covenants, uh, special restrictive covenants that included, you know, the requirement that should there ever be any fees, they would be the same for residents as non-residents.
Uh, well, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I mean, that, I understand. If it's, if it's a covenant we've already agreed to, then I understand.
Right. The FCT grants that we received, as well as the Broward County Open Space Preservation Grants that we received from the Land Preservation Bond of two thousand had certain requirements. So all of the FCT and open space properties, um, have those same requirements, um, with the exception of Rolling Oaks Park because we only received a portion of the funding for the acquisition of the total property. And the barn was part of the property that was not paid for by the grant funding.
Thank you.
Any other question, comments, or concerns, counsel? Real quickly, December, just to confirm, a hundred dollars for six hours, is that?
Yes. And in comparison, the, the shelter at the Fishing Hole or Park formerly known as Fishing Hole, um, is, yes, the Country Estates Park, uh, is about a little less than half the size of the shelter at the Equestrian Park. Now we have to, ultimately, if we have some of the similar amenities at Fishing Hole, at Country Estates Park that we have at the Equestrian Park, such as a grill and other types of walking trails, et cetera, they will be comparable, but the size dictates that it be.
And I see you secure, secure deposit, two hundred dollars. What, the cleanup fee? What is, uh, what is that assessment gonna be?
Uh, that would only be assessed if there was something that needed special cleanup.
If they took care of it, there wouldn't be, uh, okay. And that would be taken out of the security deposit if you go there and do an assessment and you have to have subsequent, uh, you know, people come there to do cleanup.
Correct.
And then by an hour, okay.
We've never had to withhold a single dime from any security deposit in the years that we've operated our one park, just so you know that.
Thanks, December. Again, we have a motion and a second to prove, to approve. No additional questions, comments, or concerns. Russell, call the question, please.
Councilmember Breckers?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number sixteen.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, establishing use and usage policies for the Rolling Oaks Park, governing rental use of the meeting room and community room, establishing a fee schedule and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is, uh, the same but different. Establishes the rental policy for the Rolling Oaks barn.
Thank you, Andy. Counsel?
May I could jump in there?
Absolutely, Gary.
Okay. We've had some resident meetings and, uh, the Rolling Oaks Civic Association meetings, and we've had a lot of suggestions regarding the barn and its, uh, unique nature to our town because it'll be the only indoor facility we'll have for rentals. Um, I, I kinda want to punt this back to the Parks Board because a lot of questions have been raised on fee structure, what can and can't be done. And, uh, I'd like to pass down a list of some of the, uh, suggestions that residents have made. If you could, that I'd like to go back to the Parks Board and have them chew it, uh, chew it up, discuss it, mull over it, make suggestions, uh, and, uh, come back to us at a later date, you know, for that. So I don't know if that requires a motion or we just need to table it or, you know, what that involves at this point. If it involves a motion, I'm, I.
I'll support you in that and however we need to do it.
So would the motion be just to table this, uh, this item and bring it back at?
Yeah. We, we, we got a lot of issues to cover.
That's fine. Yeah, I see that. I see that. So I know we have a motion to table. Anybody want to second it?
Yeah, second it.
Thank you, Steve. Again, we have a motion and, uh, second to, uh, table. Public comment on the table, I guess. We can stretch it, Gay. We can, we can stretch it.
You gotta wait for the Parks Board meeting.
Only because it's input, that's right.
I mean, I did look at this, but my question is, um, we've already, evidently, we've got a waiting list for this part, for the usage. And is anything in here that is gonna affect it?
Yes.
Or are we just gonna fly by the seat of our pants until we get some sort of approval?
That's a good question. Go ahead, Gary.
If I may, I guess that's why it's called a waiting list, because we're gonna have to wait until we make some decisions here.
Does that mean you're HOA too?
Yeah. Everybody's gonna have to wait.
Of March?
I'm sorry?
Does that mean the seventh of March, when your HOA out there wants to utilize the facility and they're advertising it?
The town administrator is granting, granting exceptions to that. Like, for instance, Friday night, we have a memorial for a firefighter going on out there.
I understand that.
We're not, we're not gonna banner back and forth.
Yeah.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Miss, I, I think I still were on this, uh, this meeting.
Absolutely.
And, and again, I don't want this banner back and forth. We don't ever do that and we don't ever permit it. We want to make sure you get all the information and answer all your questions. So if there's some things, Gay, that you need clarification on, just let us know and I'll make sure that it gets answered.
No, my, my only question to you was, I don't know what's on this list, but evidently we're not, we're just gonna fly by the seat of our pants because this is gonna come back to us and then it's gonna come back to you. So we're looking at another month.
Or, or less. And I hear what you're saying. I hear your concern, but, uh, we just got confirmation that, uh, you know, just gonna have to delay the process until we come up with a, a policy. There is a potential for some exceptions. I know that there is a service out there this weekend for, uh, um, some, a family member, uh, here or somebody associated with a family here in the Town of Southwest Ranches that, uh, that passed away. So I know that they'll, he has a discretion to provide, uh, some, uh, exceptions. So.
I, I briefly looked at what you're talking about here with these regulations. Why couldn't you fly by the seat with the aid of one of the volunteers? They know enough about safety, the gasoline you're referring to with starting a barbecue, or let's say they see a, a truckload of, of beer or something like that being unloaded. The first, the first twenty or thirty minutes of that, whatever function it's gonna be there, you're gonna determine what the end of the thing is gonna be all about. They'll just be less of what you started with. So wouldn't you feel safe with one of those guys? They're, they're trained in safety, first aid, and everything else. They gotta have enough common sense to know if they're doing something dangerous. Isn't that what you're basically concerned about?
No.
Okay.
I, I'm not, I'm not fault.
No. It's about, uh, policy and getting feedback and just making sure that we get it right. And I respect your recommendation. I think everybody up here in council does.
I got a question.
Sure, Freddie. Go ahead.
Are we talking about the Country Estates Park or we talking about?
No, Rolling Oaks.
Rolling Oaks.
Rolling Oaks. The first line, though, is combined with some other feedback.
Cause I'm reading this thing.
Right. The first line was, was, was the first question that, that Steve asked, I think. It was just included on this list.
Yeah, yeah, I saw.
Again, we have a motion and a second to, uh, table. The table comments has been closed in violation of Robert's rules, but that's okay. We appreciate the feedback. Counsel, any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Send it back to the committee to evaluate and assess and come up with the policies sometime in the very near future because I know that there is, uh, a line that's, uh, that's waiting. Everybody okay with that? Freddie?
Well, I think what, what we need to do is, you know, this is our first experience with something like this. I think we need to have some kind of a committee that handles it.
That's what, that's what Gary's recommendation is, the Parks Board. Yeah, absolutely.
This is, this is kinda important. We're not gonna get it right a hundred percent on the first go-round, but it's gonna be awfully hard to change things as we go along. And there is a lot we do know now that we can put in place and we can massage it as we go down the line, but I'd like to get it as close as we can to getting it right.
This thing here, maybe I'm wrong, but it's gonna be a moneymaker for the town. I know, I know of organizations that I know that they're already interested in renting the barn, I mean, the building. You know, I bought Deduction Limited and we're looking for a place, you know, we fight to do it. And, uh, there's a lot of them right behind us. It's gonna be.
Yeah, that's, that's why we want to make sure we get it, we get it right, or as close as we can to getting it right.
I, like I say, is it needs to be somebody, whether the town people that's on this committee?
Yes, it's a, a Parks Board.
Cause this is a business.
Absolutely.
We're gonna be running a business here.
Yep, absolutely. We want to make sure we get it right.
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be the Parks Board. It's all residents and I'm the council liaison.
Well, I mean, you say though, we're not gonna limit this. If you're not a resident of town, you're still gonna be able to rent this building.
Well, that's what's being contemplated.
Right, where that's, that's one of the things we're talking about.
With, uh, putting together the, uh, the, the rules. All right. We got a motion to second to table. Any other clarification, counsel? Questions?
I, I guess just that Andy's gonna be able to, in the meantime, make, uh, decisions.
He has, right, he has the, the power to make exceptions so that, and there will be some exceptions. Obviously, we've already made one.
Yeah, exactly. I just wanna make sure we didn't.
Very important circumstance. Okay. Call a question, please, Russell?
Councilmember Breckers?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number seventeen. Again, this is a discussion item and, uh, I know Marty's very, very excited about presenting his, uh, budget calendar for this year. And I know he's working, uh, very, very hard. And, uh, so Marty, the floor is all yours. Just a confirmation of the process and the timeframes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, counsel. Uh, in conjunction with our kickoff, um, we're proud, Andy and I, this is looking into now our fourth budget season for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. It's amazing how the time flies.
It does fly.
Uh, I, I presented on your exhibit, uh, it's page one eighty-three. It's a color-coordinated schedule. Uh, we've had, um, the staff kick it off with their, uh, monthly staff meeting, um, give everyone, um, an insight as to their duties, their responsibilities, the deadlines. Tonight, the big issue is with council approval, um, to give you a little heads up in the yellow areas, uh, what I'm asking you to concentrate on. The yellow areas, you will see, the first one on the top of the page is tonight, is our memo, uh, our two-page memo, gives you a little outline of where we're, uh, planning out the timeframe. The second yellow is, is Andy's plan, uh, to, to have almost two full months, the month of March and, uh, April, to provide, uh, one-on-one in, meeting with you individually, obtaining your policy direction. The preliminary, there's, there's no planned change moving down to the third yellow line regarding the prelimi, preliminary mileage rate and the initial fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, fire protection and solid waste special assessment adoption. That, um, has historically taken place at our second meeting in July. Gives us enough time to get the preliminary rates, uh, get the book published, uh, give you time to, uh, digest it and be able to discuss it on a preliminary basis. The workshop, um, we, we shook up different, um, periods over the last three years. We were most successful to have the workshop, uh, towards the late August area, the August twenty-fifth. Uh, one time when we had it last year, uh, early, um, people may have been out of town. Um, I've noticed that we've, we get the most attendance with practically a full month of the budget being distributed, um, the advisory councils to provide us input, and we've had most success. So, um, I've put our planned budget workshop for the Tuesday, August twenty-fifth. Again, that's not a public hearing. It's only a workshop and everybody will be invited to attend. The conflict we're facing tonight, and with your permission, you'll see the two, uh, lines and dates as indicated in red. The, um, the, our regular council meetings are scheduled presently for Thursday, September tenth and Thursday, September twenty-fourth. Unfortunately, we run into this problem every year and when we set the schedule, it's a whole year, it's contingent on, um, other tentative dates, uh, depending on, uh, we were faced two conflicts, actually three conflicts. We can't meet, we're not allowed to meet when the school bar meets, we're not allowed to meet when the Broward County meets. And, uh, because the town saves money by utilizing the property appraiser for our first notice for the fire assessment and solid waste assessments, we cannot meet prior than September twelfth. So, uh, that throws out our tenth meeting. Uh, we only have a window of three days. And, uh, that would be Saturday, September twelfth, Monday, September fourteenth, and Tuesday, September fifteenth. Uh, the, the other problem we run into is the Jewish holidays of Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah. Uh, the Rosh Hashanah holidays fall on the Sunday night, the fourteenth, and goes through Tuesday. So the fact that, um, the, the, the fact that the, um, Broward County School Board has presently scheduled a meeting on the sixteenth, we're forced with only two options for our first regularly scheduled meeting. That would be Saturday, the twelfth, or Tuesday, the fifteenth, uh, to have no conflict with the Jewish holiday. Um, accordingly.
My vote is.
Is Tuesday, September fifteenth. Um, that's for our first hearing. And then, uh, moving down to the second hearing, we need, we need two weeks to get the publications out, to get the advertising, uh, to get the notice requirements. So, um, that has been recommended for Tuesday, September, September twenty-ninth. And with that in mind, I'll just open up for any, uh, questions that you may have.
I, I know what Mike, go ahead, Steve.
Marty, I gotta tell you, I, I'm starting to feel like there's a conspiracy going on here. The fifteenth is my birthday and every year you've got a story why we have to have a meeting on the fifteenth. So, you know, all right, I'll buy it one more year. I'll, uh, it's the fifteenth, I guess, so.
Make sure we bring a cake and.
I was gonna say, maybe we have birthday cake and ice cream for him.
We'll celebrate a birthday and, uh.
Put an extra twelve dollars in the budget for a birthday cake.
That's right. Everybody on board with that? I, I don't like the idea of a Saturday unless it's, it's important. But everybody okay with Tuesday, the fifteenth?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Like they say, like they said in the movie, it's your fault. You trusted us.
All right, Marty. Tuesday, the fifteenth. Everything else is, uh, everything else is good.
Okay, uh, the town clerk just, um, wants me to indicate also the twenty-ninth because we have to do the change for the second meeting from the, uh, September twenty-fourth to the Tuesday, September twenty-ninth.
Listen, if, if that's what you need in order to assist you with, uh, you know, the, the time parameters, Marty, we're a hundred percent supportive. If that's what you're suggesting, recommend, uh, recommending, I am sure that everybody up here is on board.
Thank you. That would be perfect.
No, thank you, Marty. Appreciate it. A lot of time and effort and, uh, thank you. Okay, that concludes, uh, item number seventeen. Eighteen, we've, uh, moved out of order. And again, item number nineteen, the approval of the minutes for the February twelfth, two thousand and fifteen regular meeting.
Shall move.
Second. I got a motion and a second. And, uh, Richard, you'd be surprised, but we do open it up for public comment because they have corrected some of our minutes before. So, uh, any members of the public read the minutes and have any issues with them for the, uh, twelfth of February? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Again, we got a motion to second, approve the minutes for the February twelfth, two thousand and fifteen regular meeting. Call a question, please, Russell?
Councilmember Breckers?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. And I will speak on behalf of the entire council. The agenda is completed.
Means adjourned.
By adjourned.